There was coloring of the black oaks so we could grow timber. Then there was. We're going to decommission all the roads because we want roadless areas. Well, that is a major impediment to fire. Suppression when all the forest roads have been decommissioned. Now, then we went to the oak woodland restoration, which was the opposite of when they were killing the oaks. So these are the kind of questions that I have, and I haven't had a lot of dealings with. Shasta Trinity, most of my district is Six Rivers National Forest, but those kind of questions are the things that. People see it's like, yeah, this sounds really good on paper. But at some point, the money that gets put into this, what's the outcome for Trinity County? I mean, it would be nice if we had a sawmill in Hayfork again. It would be nice if Weaverville Sawmill was. Rourke and Three Ships and that there was actually some some timber money coming in. So that's one of the things that I would like to see pushed is not just. A burning and and pre-commercial thinning, but let's harvest some timber and increase. The usefulness of our forest besides just. There's more to our forest than to have a place to go look. It needs to be used, and that's my concern with all these things moving forward.
I I could not agree with you more Supervisor Frazier. All all tools are on the table with us. All activities are on the table with this. We can't do it focused on one thing. We can't do it focused on just burning or just pre-commercial thinning. We are absolutely looking at timber harvest as a critical piece of the whole puzzle moving forward with this, no doubt. No doubt, we would be silly, silly to be taking tying our own hands with what we can do. The forest needs all of these pieces. All of these pieces of treatment are really important. And so so all the including the timber. The timber treatments as well, all of that is going to be looked at for out year planning. If we didn't have anything right now in this fiscal twenty-three piece planned, that certainly doesn't mean that we haven't. Been looking at and will continue to look at where we can provide merchantable timber off the forest. Because we do have a a multi-use sustainable use mandate, and we have to operate our forest consistent with that mandate. That's not a choice that we're allowed to make. And then in terms of your out out year, how permanent is this? We would all love to know that. I I do want to make certain that we seize this opportunity in the coming. You know, immediate years and immediate out years to the greatest extent possible. The wildfire crisis strategy has a ten-year look with the hope that it's going to be pushed out further. The funding that came down from these statutes, these unique funding sources. Are not tied to fiscal years, and so we do have the ability to access them in out years. Will they run out? Absolutely. Will we need another influx? Absolutely. To maintain what we have started and to actually, as we like to say, move the needle on the landscape. This cannot be a one-year, five-year, or even ten-year effort. It has to be a consistent effort where this where this agency is funded over the long term. At a level that allows it to actually do the work it needs to do. I wish I had a crystal ball and I wish I could say, yes, that's going to happen in in out years. I don't know the answer to that. What I do know is we have an opportunity now and we are not going to let that go.
And then I do have one more question. You mentioned NEPA and the and streamlining. And in the post-fire recovery, is is that going to be something that you can streamline so that we don't have? I mean, I live in the August complex footprint and the projects still haven't really started. So we're almost it'll be three years before anything starts, and that's too long. So i- is that something that's actually going to start to pick up where you can streamline NEPA? Where if we have a fire, you can start as soon as the fire is out to do the recovery?
So couple of impediments that we are hoping are going to lighten as a result of this initiative. The NEPA streamlining is relatively limited to the footprints of our high-risk fire sheds. So depending on where the fire is, if it happens to be in that footprint and we are still under the the emergency authorities. Then the answer is yes, we will have some additional flexibilities to roll out more quickly in the post-fire world. But another piece of this that that we are hoping to move forward with is. The bigger picture NEPA and other environmental analyses documents, the programmatic documents that we will now have. The funding to look at forest-wide. And so if we can get some of these forest-wide programmatic documents, you may be familiar with the Six Rivers has a prescribed. Burn programmatic document that they are almost finalizing right now or almost ready to finalize. So something akin to that, but for other types of treatments across the landscape. If we can get that into place now, then we will have that coverage over those areas. Into the future and be able to act more quickly and more nimbly. Once a fire or another emergency happens and we want to go ahead and implement. Because often what holds us up is the planning phase prior to being able to implement. So if we can either A, take advantage of the streamlining like you're mentioning. Across the high-risk fire sheds that we have, or B, get some pre-planning done. Get some programmatic instruments in place that allow us the flexibility to move out more quickly. Those will be wins in both categories. Okay Supervisor Gogan.
I have a couple of questions or one question since I see this. Most of the fire danger is in District Three Hayfork, Begum, Burton Ranch. From my understanding is we still have part-time Rangers in Hayfork, Plutina. I think Big Bar, are we going to get a full-time Ranger in those posts? Since obviously we fall into the largest bracket of this fire danger. And we we're still running on half-time or part-time. Fire Rangers there. Is there a chance that we will get a full-time Ranger in Hayfork? Plutina, Big Bar, and I think even Weaverville.
Thank you for your question Supervisor. So you have a full-time Ranger in in Tara Jones. She is she is absolutely authorized to cover the entire west side of the Shasta Trinity. And that would include all of Trinity County. Ranger Jones will have a full-time deputy district ranger. Once that gets staffed up, who will also be empowered to cover the entire west side. Of the Shasta Trinity and in Trinity County. We intend to maintain presences at each of the different district offices that we have in the county. There is no plans around reorganizing the way the offices are structured. And we are going to continue to attempt to staff up the South Fork Management Unit. Separate from the Trinity River Management Unit that we have. We have two administratively distinct units on this side of the forest. Our hiring efforts for the South Fork Management Unit have been challenging. We do have funding and energy focused there to try to get a fully-staffed office. Happening in the South Fork Management Unit, and we will continue to. Interview folks and fill vacancies until we have two fully-staffed management units. Within this county and on this side of the forest. While we are in the effort of trying to staff up two fully-staffed units. Having a combined leadership structure is the most efficient and effective way to manage the folks. We have a lot of folks in Weaverville that travel to Hayfork. And that that work in the Hayfork offices. And we share a lot of staff right now still across these two management units. While we are sharing staff, we need to have a unified leadership structure to ensure that our staff is deployed. As effectively as possible and that we don't have competing priorities, sort of pooling them in a multitude of directions. So in this moment, no, we are not going to be staffing a separate leadership structure in the Hayfork. On the South Fork Management Unit in the Hayfork Office. We are going to retain our combined leadership structure for the time being. Until we have our both units fully staffed. I have good confidence. We've been making progress. And Supervisor, rather Ranger Jones can give you a little bit more detail if you'd like on the different positions we have been able to fill. It is slow-going, and so we need to be continue to be patient with getting those offices staffed up. And making certain that those employees have a unified voice across the county. To ensure that we are not actually missing our operational tempo in either place.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Capodere.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative. I grew up. For Service Green, one of the greatest moments in the my day was when my dad pulled down the back driveway of our house in his. Uniform in his green truck and he jumped out with his white boots on and picked me up and hold me in one arm. And I thought I was on top of the mountain. It wasn't until I was an adult that I realized my dad was only five-nine. And that that height I was experiencing was mostly just his presence. So thank you for your guys' service to our forest. One of the things I'm hopeful kind of is along with Supervisor Frazier is. Trying to get some of those trees that have been burnt off of that landscape when they're still merchantable. I know that there's always been a struggle with that with NEPA and then just planning and activities. So that's something I I'm looking forward to seeing happen more rapidly. Because we can we can skin some money off of those, even though they've been kind of heated up a little bit. They're not going to survive, you know, so we might as well get something out of them. So I'm looking forward to to seeing that come along. Also, I am very, very grateful to see that the Burton Ranch community is going to be served in some of this new funding. The Forest Service Road Services, the High and Palm Community as well, many people pass over that to get to Highway two ninety-nine during good weather seasons. And that's their direct route out kind of to either go to go to the coast most of the time. So I'm really looking forward to those roads being, you know, just returned to really being viable and and able for us to use them. During the sixty-four flood, those were the some of the only ways that people survived that that season. And for us to think that that's not coming again is is foolishness on our behalf. So making sure that those high-ridge roads are are really passable is is really important. And so I hope that the fuels reduction happens along the sides of those. And then we can also maybe surface them so that we can have emergency equipment and vehicles passing with good thoroughfare. But thank you for your time. If you ever need anything down in my district on District Four and High and Palm Burton Ranch, Shawyer area, let me know. I'd be more than happy to to walk beside you and try to get as much of this work done as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you Supervisor.
One more questions before I I let you go if I could. When you were talking about this combined leadership structure and the fact that we do have. Right now, a deputy district ranger serving full-time under Ranger Jones, who is also a deputy ranger Jones. No relation.
Oh.
Correct? So that's a detailed position at this time, right? So my question is, I know you're wanting to staff that full-time. Is there going to be a gap between his detail and when a new person comes on? I mean, obviously, that would be a hopeful no, but do you have any foresight?
We so. We always want to keep that position fully staffed. Thus far, it's been with details. We are rolling forward with a permanent vacancy announcement on that. Those things take a hot minute in the federal government. So I do expect that we will have another detailer filling the the in-between time. Before we're able to actually bring on our permanent.
And those details are typically how many months?
Four.
Okay. And then the other thing, and this is a little bit out there, maybe we discuss this a little bit later, but it occurs to me. Because we have had our superintendent of schools in Washington DC advocating for our Secure Rule Schools funding. That payment in lieu of taxes that we used to receive, which was funded off of timber sales. And and so in in these questions about, hey, can we really do some significant logging as a as an important tool in the toolbox? Is there a connection here? Can we see some some dollars flowing yet again? So that when we begin to advocate for what we also need for our roads in addition to our schools. Do we see those dollars there or do we see those dollars as with our Good Neighbor Authority? Refueling the money that gets initially placed into that agreement? Do you have a sense as to what might be reasonable?
If so, it depends on what happens with the Secure Rule Schools Act effort. But there is no question that, you know, once we get more, the more timber sales that we are able to roll out. That's going to be beneficial from the Secure Rule Schools Act side of things, depending on how that plays out. And we don't have so much control over that from this side, but it would only inure to our benefit to to roll forward with the timber operations. The the Good Neighbor Authority, however, you've hit the nail on the head. That's going to be a fantastic way for the Forest Service to funnel some money back to the county. For projects that have a nexus to National Forest System land, many of which that we've spoken about do. And so we are able to actually have kind of a much more direct impact with our funding. You know, kind of spread about the county activities in that realm. The Secure Rule Schools Act piece of it is a little bit too hazy at this point for us to know kind of, okay, how could we position ourselves here? To catch that money or maximize that money to the greatest extent possible? I don't I don't even know what the next iteration is going to, what is what is it even going to tie to in the county? So trying to kind of look at that crystal ball, that might that that might be a little bit more hazy for us. But I think a focus on the on the Good Neighbor Authority and and that mechanism to to infuse. Money for projects that the county is working on is a is a great way to do it.
For sure, and maybe this is a conversation we can kind of start and continue going forward. You and I, as these conversations continue and we see what that looks like.
Perfect.
Yeah. Thank you. Really appreciate you being here. Really fun to see all your staff in the room. I do want to give a shout out to Sarah Acreage because in my board report out, we've got some exciting news about the. Minersville Boat Ramp Project, and I just thank you for your work on that. And our goal, my goal, my hope going forward is at the end of this, everybody is going to come out looking great. Everybody is working so hard. There are efforts being made from multiple directions. Towards something we all see as being so important. And so thank you. And Ranger Jones, I just appreciate your ongoing work. She is tireless and your efforts are. As she often says, not lost on us. We see them. And all of her work in the collaborative meeting last Friday, which I'll share more about and. Her, it it's amazing to me watching as you did spread this leadership. You know, her oversight over a broader spectrum of leadership. And I I was sweating a little bit and thought she'll drop. How can one person uphold all of this? And she's amazing. She is not dropping. She just moves forward with such strength and diligence. So thank you for that. And best of luck to you as you move forward in your endeavors today with your team here and all of the projects that are ahead of you. So a good and productive day to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, we will now circle back to our item one point one. Our, excuse me, Sites Reservoir Project. I had shared. At our January eighteenth meeting that I had met Thad Betner, who is the general manager of Galen Calusa Irrigation District. When Supervisor Luitweiler and I were at the Economic Forecasting Conference. Last month and had asked that he would come and give a presentation. The problem is the exchange of information only went one direction. And I thought, why am I going to just sit and hope that he is able to give me a call and make this happen? And then I recalled I had met Jerry Brown at the RCRC meeting when he did a wonderful presentation in December. When a former Supervisor Brown. Took me under his umbrella and to give me wonderful introductions to the RCRC staff and the support that is there. So we have with us today Jerry Brown. He is owns a waterology consulting business of his own. But he is the principal consultant and CEO of the Sites Reservoir Project. And he has traveled to be here with us in person today. I'm really grateful to you for your energies, your efforts. And it's exciting what we're going to be able to understand about this project today with your guidance. So thank you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff and members of the public. I'm pleased to be here today to provide you with an update on the Sites Reservoir Project. It's been about three years, I think, since someone from the project came to the Board of Supervisors. And talked to you about the the issues and concerns that were expressed through various project elements at that time. And I'm happy to report over the last three years, we've made some really significant changes to the project. And in many respects, changes that are definitely highly recognizing of the Trinity River resource. That you all manage and are involved with. And it recognizing its importance to the state of California and to this region. But also identifying that, you know, the state is in a situation where we have an urgent and. Severe need for increased water storage, water storage that the Sites Reservoir will provide for for the state. And and so I want to report those changes to you today and to get any other feedback or any other issues or concerns that you might have. I did have a slide presentation and there are several slides in here that I won't need to go over today. But a few things that I wanted to emphasize for sure. Next slide, please. When it when people ask me, what is Sites Reservoir? I I I tend to look at things as machines. And when asked, what is Sites Reservoir? I say, it's a time machine. Because essentially, we're taking the water that we we receive in abundance in wet periods and saving it. For times when we need it severely in the dry times. And that's what Sites Reservoir does in a very simplistic way. Next slide, please. Who is in charge of the Sites Reservoir Project? It's not the federal government. It's not the state government. It's a group of local water districts in the Sacramento Valley that are listed here. In twenty-ten, those folks came together and created what's called the Sites Project Authority. To be in charge and locally manage and lead this project. Yes, we have federal and state involvement in the project, but the leadership and the ownership and the operation of the. Project, the responsibility for those things all lie with this local water district. This is not a private reservoir. This is not a private enterprise. This is a local government enterprise, a local government-led-run facility. Next slide, please. We do have statewide participation in the project. These are water districts that are essentially each investing in the project for the benefit of their ratepayers. They're all public water districts within the state of California. It's a broad statewide participation, which provides us with a diversity and our. And and involvement from many of the constituencies across the state. The one thing I wanted to point out here that is different from three years ago when we came to you, we have a waiting list. We have an oversubscription of potential users and you don't have to look very far to understand where that's coming from. It's coming from a severe need for water in our state and the development of new water supplies, which Sites Reservoir provides. Next slide, please. I pretty much already went over this, but flexibility is what Sites Reservoir is all about. When I talk about a time machine, it's really about creating flexibility for those dry years that we're all recognizing are so critical to. Not just our farms and families, but also our fish and fowl. That that absolutely need to have water supplies in in these dry periods and and climate change. And the effects that that we're seeing from climate change are having a serious impact on our environment. And I'm happy to report that the Sites Reservoir has a significant component of investment for that purpose. Next slide, please. Just wanted to let you know, not nothing's really changed in terms of where this project is located. It's about eight miles to the west of Maxwell, California off Highway five. It's a beautiful topography, very uniquely situated for the construction of an off-stream reservoir. Next slide, please. There's about a hundred and eighty miles of conveyance. It's part of this project and it's only about twenty miles. It's new. And I I tell people that that this is not a cost-effective project of all that existing infrastructure wasn't already in place. This is the major piece of new infrastructure, a four-mile, ten-foot diameter pipe that's going to cross under I five. At about the Ritchie Brothers Auction Yard and and connect the Tama Culis Canal with the Calusa Basin Drain. That's how we're going to get the water back into the Sacramento River during these dry times. To convey to to the to those that are going to use the water. Next slide. Funding, the funding has been secured over the last three years. We are largely fully funded for the project. There are no grants for this project. This is all user-paid. The state has made a determination that they are an investor for public benefits of eight hundred and seventy-five million dollars. That's not a grant. That's actual receipt of assets and consideration for the public benefits. The federal government through the Bureau of Reclamation has made a determination that it would like to be an investor at sixteen percent. Which is a little over seven hundred million dollars of the project. They have not yet secured all those funds for that share. And and actually, in order to make that room, we have to adjust the participants' level of of investment down. So we're we're still, that's a little bit in flux, probably at least for the next couple of years. Till we get a little more clarity on where the federal government's money supply is going to finally land. Largely, this is funded by loans and bonds that the local agencies are going to commit to repaying. WIFIA is an Environmental Protection Agency federal program that is very. It was competitive and we were selected last year to apply for a two-point-two-billion-dollar loan, which is three times larger than any loan. They they've issued under that program in the in the past. And so we're very privileged and and working hard to make that loan secure. And then we have a USDA loan still that probably was reported to you last time we had that when we were here. And and then whatever else we need is going to be made up with bonds and cash from participants. Next slide. Just wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the environmental planning. We're coming to the close of this environmental review process that started in twenty-seventeen. That was the document that you all had raised some concerns about. You and Humboldt County and other interests in the local region here. Concerns about the potential for Trinity River Resources to be utilized to serve Sites Reservoir. Once we received your input and considered that, we've made some significant adjustments in the twenty-twenty-one document. That that identify that that is not the case, that there are no Trinity River resources that are be going to be brought into the Sites Reservoir. And so that's what's going to be reflected in the final document that's coming forward in the May in May of this year. Significant for you guys is the water right permit, and that's the one piece that I wanted to give you a quick update on. And I'll get to that in just a few more slides. If you go back to the engineering, yeah, next one. We are making good progress in the field with some geotechnical evaluations. We have boots on the ground and machines and equipment out in the field, looking at the various geotechnical under under the surface. Conditions so that we can better understand and address and estimate what the project costs are going to look like. Right now, we're at about a four-billion-dollar project cost in twenty-twenty-one dollars, four-point-four billion. If you go to midpoint of construction. And so by the end of next year, we're looking to be at about twenty thirty percent design. And that will be enable us to go forward with construction. Next slide. Real estate is a critical component to the project. Of course, we have fourteen thousand acres in the valley that are going to have to be inundated. And this is going to require that we secure those lands for this purpose. And there's about twenty-five landowners, plus or minus, within the valley itself. And we're already working cooperatively with with those that are willing sellers. Which are probably eighty to ninety percent of those folks. And working with them to get access for these evaluations that are being undertaken currently. And and we'll be working with them over the next couple of years to secure those parcels as necessary to make the project happen. We did make a, next slide, please. We did make a water right application in May of last year. And we're in the process of going back and forth with the Water Board right now. But I think very soon we're going to be at a point where the application is going to be deemed complete. And that then then that will start the hearing process and. And that then then that will start the hearing process and the further conduct of the state board's activities to actually make the determination of a water right for the project. Very important for you all in the past has been consideration of the CVP and what's happening with with the reclamation's management of the CVP because of the connection that that occurs with the Trinity River system in that regard. Very specifically in our water right application, this is all water that would be put in sites reservoir would be new, a new water right. There would be no availability or possibility for us to store CVP or SWP in the in the in the reservoir as as it would be permitted today. So there would be no application. There is no application or a request for a water right to divert or re divert Trinity River water. Next slide, please. This just gives you some facts and figures as it relates to the actual water right parameters. Next slide, please. There were, in our water right application, we identified some very specific terms to try to address constituents' issues that were raised through the evaluation period and I would highlight number five on here regarding the Trinity River, which I wanted to give you specifically what the term is. Next slide. Specifically, there there is no, and this this was provided and brought forward by the authority voluntarily to reassure those that are concerned about the Trinity River and the effect of sites reservoir on the Trinity River to reassure everyone that there is no intention and no commitment and a firm commitment by the sites water authority to in no way affect or divert or re divert any Trinity water into the sites reservoir. Next slide, please. I'm not going to get into this part too heavily, but it does seem to get a lot of attention, the idea that you know, is there really water available in the Sacramento River for this, for putting into the sites reservoir? I don't think you really have to look too much farther than last month when we had the nine atmospheric rivers come through our state and the abundance of water that we were seeing in the Sacramento Valley to understand that there are times and periods when water is available for this purpose. And actually, while I acknowledge and to some extent, agree with folks that believe that water flowing naturally all the way to the ocean is a useful and beneficial purpose for the environment. We have come to a point in time in our society where we really have to look at hard at trade offs. And it's my personal assessment, being in the water business for over 35 years, that 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 trade, we've come to that point and that trade off between having that water flow out at abundant times compared to the saving of that water so that it can be reintroduced in the drier times. We've reached the point where that level of optimization and that flexibility is absolutely necessary for our society. And so when we look at something like a water availability, we've done extensive reviews of different ways of analyzing and looking at both today's circumstances and the future circumstances in terms of our availability of water. In all cases, next slide, please. You can see that there is water available for the sites reservoir as illustrated in this table. Not in all years, but in many years and go back one year to 2021, when we had a very wet December, followed by a very dry January, February, March. That was a very dry year, but there were even a period in December when some of the water could have been diverted into sites reservoir if it had been in place. So our average annual diversions are about 300,000 acre feet. So you can see from this table, the third column to the right that that there are times, many times on an average annual basis, when there's three to five times more water available for for a sites reservoir than than is being requested. So I'll leave you just with one little point. During those storms in January, we estimated that we would have been able to divert about 250,000 acre feet into storage, which would be hugely beneficial for for our communities. And that is an amount of water that is less than 4% of the total water that was leaving the rivers into the ocean. And so it gets back to my point about trade offs and what are we, what are we really sacrificing if we're we're taking less than 4% of that water and and saving it for all purposes, not just humankind purposes, but also for environmental purposes. That's the trade off that I think is most important that that we all need to recognize is important for everyone. Final slide is just the the schedule. Next slide, please. Skip that one, just the schedule. We are on a track here to finalize the environmental document at the end of May or May. And then we hope to receive our final water right by the end of next year. That's our trigger between the critical permits and our water right. That's the trigger for initiating the final design and construction. We hope to be in the construction in 2025 and be completed by the beginning of 2032. So that concludes my report today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Let's start at the opposite end. Supervisor Carbon Harris, do you have questions?
No, it's very interesting and I will continue to read up about it. I'm 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 in agreement that we need to hold water when we can. And I am also in agreement that we have hit a point where we're having, we're going to have to make some serious, as you said, you know, trade offs or or compromises and recognizing that we can't live with management of a single issue. We have to, we have to find out ways to to kind of spread our concerns across the line. We have to eat food. I don't know anyone here who grows all of their own food totally. So that's a concern, obviously. And then also just ma- making sure that we protect for us, the fish and the things along the river that are the most important to us here. So thank you for your time and your information.
Thank you. Thank you, madam.
There has been a valuation done of the lack of water getting to the San Francisco Bay because of your 4% or whatever it might be annually. So there have been studies on how that may affect fish to come into the bay, the saltwater, the salinity, the the brackish water. Does it, does it change that at all in a detrimental way to any of the fish that need a certain percentage of X type water to stay alive?
In our now, that is something that we've analyzed Supervisor Gogan and and in our analysis. No, it is not something, the the amount of water that we're talking about for the sites reservoir is not something that has a significant effect or material effect on either the fish species or the ability to repel the seawater intrusion. We're talking about situations where outflow in the delta is generally over 30,000 or 40,000 CFS. In this last series of storms, it was 150,000 CFS and you know, flooding was occurring in various locations. So it is not a significant or merit material effect on any species or salinity repulsion.
And somewhere in there, I saw the BOR had a certain percentage of this. What what are, what are their plans? If this is not a this is a private thing. This is a public, public deal, but obviously I know BOR is not that public and judicious with the water all the time. I did see the Western Water District on there too, so that raises a couple hairs on my back there. So for the, I think it was $700,000, pretty cheap federally. What, what, why do they want in?
It was 700 million, 16% of the project. Why do they want in? They're really seeking a couple of different purposes. First is environmental purposes. The site, because of the location of the sites reservoir, it's very complimentary to the operation of Shasta in regard to storing and control, better controlling cold water for salmon species in the river. And so that is one aspect that they're looking at. The other is supplemental water supply for their contractors and flexibility that that something like a sites reservoir provides for that purpose. This is an unusual and sometimes seems uncomfortable position for reclamation to be in as an investor in a project as opposed to the in charge lead leadership. But Senator Feinstein was instrumental in creating what's called the WIN Act in 2016 that that allowed for state state led projects, which also means local led projects to allow for reclamation to be investors in those projects. And she did that essentially to complement the state's Prop One investment that had just passed by the voters in 2014. Recognizing that the days of the federal government coming in and doing everything and 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 having their way are over and they don't exist any longer and but but that the federal government in its capacity to serve its customers still needs to be able to make investments. And so that is the, that is the mechanism under which we are operating and we're one of the first to be venturing into that space. But I can tell you that many of our investors that are that are part of the sites authority are very, are are reclamation contractors. And so they'll feel very empowered by this opportunity to be in charge of the project and to recognize reclamation as an investor and have all the rights and obligations that come with that, risks and rewards as well. But but not necessarily succumbing to the federal government's demands at all times.
Rosie outlook you have. So it was 700 and something in total cost for the project was?
Total cost is a little over 4 billion, 4.4 if you go to midpoint of construction, 4.4 billion.
And there's a 16%, is that what you said? 16% will that raise as the total cost goes up or is that?
Yeah, there's a function, a percentage of the actual cost. That is the current envisioned.
So there's 16% will continue, say this is 100 billion, they'll they'll put in 16 billion. Is that correct?
So what? Yeah.
Is that what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
Personally, how do you feel about that?
Well, I think there's, it's uncertain whether that is going to materialize. So far, they put in about 200 million. They've committed 200 million into the project, not that we've gotten that, but that that's in the bank. And I'm telling all the other investors, you know, we need to see the money. And when it comes two years from now, when we need to sign loan papers for 2.9 billion dollars, they all have to commit to that as local water districts. They got to know reclamation is going to be there with their money. It can't be we promised to pay because you know, we're going to have a problem, hard hard time getting our loan if that's the way things are going to be. It's going to be tough over the next two years with the federal government being in the situation that it is and what we're hearing and seeing from Washington. And and we have contingencies if that doesn't materialize. As I said, right now we've got to dial some of the local participation back just to make room for that. I'm very comfortable with where we are right now with the local participation and where if if nothing changed, reclamation would be in about 7%, which is about 400 million dollars. And so they've given 200 million. They've been putting in about 100 million a year so far. So we've got two more years. Math makes sense, right? So we're we're in pretty good shape and we'll see how it turns out.
You had mentioned their risk reward. I would hope this would be a reward type thing, but you did mention risk.
Of course.
Tell me about that.
Any investment has risk, right? Any worth investing in at least. Well, there's, there's, there are, there are numerous risks in building a dam project. Most notably is trying to understand what's underneath the surface of the dirt and and understanding that helps to alleviate those risks. So all the things we're involved with right now are focused on addressing risk and uncertainty in the project. And this is the cheapest time to be managing for risk and uncertainty. You don't, you don't manage for it when you're in construction. Because that's when it's super expensive and you're going to lose your shorts. So all of our focus right now is on risk. Another one is the operational risk, you know, what's the, what's the risk that the hydrology is going to be drier, more dry, so dry over a longer period of time that you're not going to be able to fill the reservoir? And you know, that is a potential risk. And one other thing that we're trying to do as a project team is making sure that all of our investors understand what those risks are so that they can make their assessments as far as an investment is concerned.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Supervisor Fraser.
I just wanted to check when all this work that you're doing right now, will it include the protocols that allow you to have captured that water during that specific time? And in part because I, you know, I think of what we've been involved in with releases of water into the Trinity River and how that had to be legislated and everything else. And now I'm just wondering, how how are you setting yourself up for the flexibility and and quick response that you need to to act in those situations?
The answer to your question is yes, we are establishing all of those conditions primarily in our water right, which is a, which is like a property right. An invested right, I guess you'd say, is another way to look at it. And and in our critical permits, but in your permits, you, you know, you have to understand that these are permits that are issued under the current conditions. And presumably, conditions are always changing because we live in a dynamic world. And with one of the risks is that those permit conditions can change. And so I'm constantly emphasizing with our investors that once we become once this, once we create this asset, we are all now bought into and become part of the health of the river and the assurance that the river will remain healthy, both for water supply and aquatic resources. And so all that we do, and and I'm trying to create a culture that is really revolved around a doing what you said you're going to do, because the worst thing you can do is to say you're going to do something and then try to get out of it later, because then nobody will trust you. And number two, understand the system and invest in the system so that all of the uses can coexist in the way that continues to allow you to enjoy the benefits of your investment.
Well, thank you. It was, that was helpful and the presentation was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, thank you for your efforts to travel to be with us today and to present and for the open communication that we have and I look forward to hearing updates as things move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
Safe travels.
All right, we are now on item 1.2, a proclamation as March being the American Red Cross Awareness and Appreciation Month. So our requested action is to adopt a proclamation recognizing March as American Red Cross Month. And with us today, we have a representative of the Red Cross, Lucy Gamaris. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors at the County of Trinity, adopt March as American Red Cross Month. Whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Trinity County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Trinity County, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments. Continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need. Whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, supporting military members and veterans, along with their families and caregivers, through the unique challenges of service. Supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service. Using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies. Or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crisis around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words. You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. And ask everyone to join in this commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity does hereby proclaim March two thousand twenty-three as Red Cross Month and encourages all citizens of Trinity County to reach out and support. Duly passed and adopted this twenty-second day of February, two thousand twenty-three by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. It is beautiful. Could I have a motion?
I move that we approve as written.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Supervisor Luke Wyler, second by Supervisor Gogan.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye.
Thank you. So Lucy, if you would come, we would present this to you. Yes.
One, two, three.
We'll now move in, excuse me, into public comment. This is a time for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? You may.
My name is Candy Hoover. I live in Douglas City. We are the main corridor between one oh one and I five now, two ninety-nine is, okay? It's been weighing on me for a couple of years when the bless her heart, my little Megan. They had on collision. Had some medical issues that happened, so I had to focus on that. Some medical issues that happened, so I had to focus on that. In Humboldt County between Eureka and Arcata. Was referred to as Blood Alley. Now I can't tell you how many fatalities it took. I know the last fatality that they had, there were six people that could killed in the car. One oh one going toward Arcata. For the old old Arcata turnoff, there was six people. They all got killed. So they finally did something about that. Now I don't know if y'all are familiar with this or not. But they have between Eureka and Arcata, they have forty-five mile an hour sign up. And you are to go forty-five miles an hour, okay? Big flashing light on it also is fine will be doubled. Okay, there's cameras that will be pictures will be taken. It will be sent to your period. You gotta have your headlights on. So my thought is, I don't know, you know, this side of the rest area in DC and or the turnoff for the DC store. I'm not, I don't know. Clear up to this side of Steel Bridge Road. All right, we have commercial and we have residential, okay? We know it's only going to get busier, all right? Just the other day, this week is a matter of fact. I was following a semi, all right? This side of the rest area, okay? He was loaded, I mean loaded with a load of lumber. I was going seventy miles an hour. I could not catch him and I didn't want to catch him. All I'm, I don't know if A. Do I need to go to the road department? B. Do I need to start a petition? C. Do I need to continue to come here? With more info? I don't know. D. Do I do all the above? All I know is I'm trying, I want to get this out, okay, to y'all. Because I don't know where to go, how to what to do.
So I have to interrupt you at this point because your three minutes are up. But if you would leave your name and contact information with our board clerk. And I'm going to reach out to you and I'm going to put you in touch with Lieutenant Lael, who is our CHP commander for Weaverville. What you're talking about is a state highway and my suspicion is that you need to probably start with the California Highway Patrol.
No problem.
With your concern. So if you'll leave your information, I'll follow up with you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Beautiful. I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you know, you can always reach out to me.
Do we have? Do we have any more public comment? Yes, thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Everhart Schneider and I live in High Amham at the end of Garrett Road. Garrett Road got washed out in January in that storm and severely damaged. It is a county road, County Road three one three. And now we heard that the county seems to want to abandon that road or turn its back to the
I'm gonna pause you for one second. I'm having trouble concentrating on what you're saying. And so we'll stop your time. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're fine.
Everhart Schneider.
Actually, just start us three minutes over if you would. I feel like I didn't concentrate at all. Thank you.
Garrett Road got washed out and severely damaged. It's a county road. And people considered it a county road for, I think, fifty years, maybe more. Now we heard that the county seems to want to abandon it and considers it a private road. Under the grounds that they could not find any written dedication for the road. So I did a little bit of research and I talked to Supervisor Carpenter Harris about it and she told me to talk to you about it. So the county maintained that road for fifty years. People assumed it's a county road. Property owners, it runs across, assumed it was a dedication to the county. The county road and county road sign is at our gate. And what I found is that situations like that are considered an implied dedication and acceptance. The dedication was implied, was assumed by the landowners. And the county accepted that dedication by maintaining it all the time. That's basically it. What I wanted to mention and ask you to look into that, consider that. Because it would be great if the county could take care of that road and we would greatly appreciate it, of course.
Okay, thank you for that. And I believe that in our last meeting's board report out, you mentioned concerns that you had, and I believe direction was given that staff would have conversations offline and that when this was ready to come back to any kind of a a board consideration for decision that Director Caucus felt was at that a juncture that that would take place. So if further is needed.
May I speak?
Yes.
The in in having some brief discussions with the County Roads Department, one of the challenges that they're facing in in even beginning conversations about how we could potentially solve this problem is that because our books don't show this as being a county road, there is no funding available for them to bill their hours to in looking at the Garrett Road project. So in order to do that, we need to discover, find monies that we can make available specifically to the roads department. So that they can build bill rather to that pool of funding to even begin conversations around the Garrett Road. Because according to Director Caucus, they can't even work on it because they have nowhere to bill those hours to.
So we'll have to have this all agendized for conversation with backup data, you know, included so that it can, we can have that conversation, which we can't do today.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So that will be agendized for next next meeting and I will.
If if our CAO and we can, they can, staff will work with you on that.
Thank you.
For decision. Okay, thank you. And thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Anna.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Anna Carson. I live in Weaverville, but I am here today as a representative of Trinity County Office of Education. So I wanted to introduce myself as the Local Childcare Planning Council Coordinator. The LPC is the acronym that I will use to describe that council. This is a council that is required by California statute. And there is a coordinator and a council in every county across California. In California, in Trinity County, I am your coordinator. So I wanted to make you aware of an effort that we are doing right now. It is called Kids Count. Okay, this is a required needs assessment that we are required to do every five years. This is for families and guardians with children zero to twelve. And for the first time ever, we are trying to do a locally led data collection effort. So historically, we have to use data sets that the state send us and it comes back to our council, which is a multi-agency council. It involves some of our supervisors. It involves HRN. It involves public health. So the data comes back to our council and they say, this doesn't look like Trinity County. Throw it out the window. So for the first time ever, we are doing a locally led data collection effort. This is live and happening right now for the month of February. We already have a hundred and fifty families that have participated. There's a survey tool. There's a QR code. There's a link. I'm here today because, one, I want to make sure that you know about it. So we have branded it as Kids Count. Catchy, I know. We want to make sure that you know about it. And we also want to make sure that you are, we're asking you to please help distribute this request to families constituents in your districts. We have, at this point, we have really low representation from Hayfork, Post Mountain and Lewiston, just looking, all of the data is collected via zip code. So even though the information is confidential, it's not anonymous, but it's confidential, we can see by zip code who's responding. So we have some pretty low response rates. As we heard from our for-service partner, local key partnerships are critical, right? And and so we're coming to asking you to to be a partner with us, help distribute this information. Okay, there's the timer. Thank you. And so I'm gonna leave a few copies and flyers. We are using an amazing analytical tool called Qualtrics. And once we get a report generated and recommendations made and submitted to California Department State Social Services in June. I will be coming back in August, hopefully as an agenda, to showcase you what we found, what our recommendations are. So that we can help inform early education programs and policies across Trinity County. You know, kids are important. I know kids are important. And I wanted you to know what we're doing. Thanks for your time. I'll leave a few back here.
Anna, one moment. Thank you for that. And if you would today put a scanned copy of that document into all of our emails, I know I would be happy to forward that to my email recipient list. And and then, yes, let's work on getting your item agendas because I'm anxious to hear back. All right, thank you for being here.
We have a Zoom meeting coming up. Can you remind me what day?
I will have to send you the email. I didn't bring my phone in because I wasn't sure what timers and buzzers would be going off, so I just left it in the car. But I will email you so that you have it. Thank you in advance for your participation and support, Supervisor Gogan. Thanks for your work. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Wonderful to see you in the position. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. I just wanted to, what great energy, right? So I'm gonna start out with like the positive that I wanted to talk about. Just sharing with you that Flora, for those of you who who don't know me, I'm the CEO of Flora, a local environmental consulting permitting firm. We're a subcontractor in Fish and Wildlife Qualified Cultivator Grant that was awarded through Cannabis for Conservation. So you can find it on the CDFW website. But Cannabis for Conservation is a nonprofit that we've worked with for a number of years on biological assessments. She has a real good, close relationship with fish and wildlife. Unfortunately, her proposal was approved. It was the largest out of this fund to date for one point five million dollars over the next two years. And the impact on Trinity farmers is that there were seventy-two that were part of this program. Because qualified cultivator, you had to be qualified, right? So to qualify for that initial round, they needed to have a DCC provisional cannabis cultivation license. And they needed to be in a priority watershed. And Jackie with Cannabis for Conservation focused on Hayfork watershed as well as the Lower South Fork. That's how we came up with the seventy-two. They were the grant award with the one point five million averages to just over about twenty thousand per cultivator. And that doesn't go directly to them. That's for services to transition them from DCC provisional to DCC annual licenses. As a subcontractor, many of those services flow through us. There's a small cultivator match. And the first year it's two thousand dollars and the next year it's twenty-five hundred. And those services might range from doing full stico documents, doing biological assessments, doing pre-construction biological surveys. We tried to assess each individual cultivator and their need at the time when the application was made. The other thing that it does is there's a compliance package that Flora provides. And that basically makes sure they're in compliance with everything. So their renewals, local state, their water board reports, their DCC electric usage, et cetera. But I see you. I I use up a lot of time. Good news, we love seeing that money come into Trinity Counties certainly and to help the farmers. They have their DCC equity fee waiver. Unfortunately, I understand the DCC equity wasn't approved for Trinity, but maybe we can reapply and get some funds for them. Because we literally have hundreds of farmers right now that are facing unemployment again for another season. So I'm anxious to listen to an update from Director Plabani. And I'll return with some of my other concerns or statements in the future. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Okay, any on Zoom?
I have Scott White.
Are you ready, Supervisors?
Yes.
Good morning, Supervisors, Chair, Scott White, Lewiston. I have a bad cold, so you'll be glad that I'm not there in the room with you today. On January third, you adopted findings of fact and conditions of approval for our lot line adjustment project. And we are truly grateful for that. During public comment on February seventh, I told you about some issues we had run into and that I hope to be here this meeting to say they have been resolved. Sadly, the situation is now even worse. Your county council told us we must file a citizen complaint with the CAO and we have done so. I have provided a copy to you and Ashley Ashley did helping me out with it and I really appreciate it. Sorry for the typos. I would try to get it in really quick. But anyway, you have the information that I submitted with that complaint. Just as this happened previously, county staff are not following applicable government code, county code. And now even worse, they're not following the approval that you gave us. We are worried that once again, we will face the dual problems of lack of experienced staff and planning, which is the lead agency. And lack of opportunity to be allowed to present all relevant information. Your new interim CAO has received our request and told us she is working on it. We have our analysis of applicable laws and procedures done and are ready to meet with her. We sincerely hope to achieve a positive resolution working with her and we will report back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other race here.
That we will close public comment and like a five minute recess if we could. We'll re-adjourn at 10:45. 10:45.
Good morning, ma'am. Interim Deputy Director of Building and Planning Ed Presley. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on. First, I would like to thank the board for recognizing March for the American Red Cross. I have a lot of stories over two decades in the military and being in various places overseas where they helped us out. They help bring people home and they take care of a lot of people around the world. So it's a lot more than just, you know, somebody coming into a room and saying they work with American Red Cross. I hope everyone understands the enormity of that impact because they have a global impact. It's not, it's not just in the room or in a particular place in the United States. So I just really appreciate their, they do some pretty miraculous things for our people, our men and women overseas. So my second thing, just to segue into my second thing here. There has been some, some ground gained in the general plan. I didn't want everyone to think that just because you're not hearing about it on a weekly basis that it's not going on. There are things that are happening. And so with a question recently, I asked our consultant team to provide overview update to the board to give everybody. And, you know, I can apologize for not having this right after the turn of the year because I should have recognized the fact that we had two new supervisors and maybe they need to be brought up to bear in exactly where the, where the plan is. Realizing that it's a multi-year plan, but it's also something that, you know, we need to keep on the front foremost. Coming out of the bad weather, and I know we're going to have some probably in the next couple of days, but as the season gets better, there's going to be a lot more happening. So I appreciate your patience with that. And that's going to be on March 7th if they're going to give that presentation. The third and last thing, because I like being short and sweet, is the low density rural housing. Just so everybody is aware of that as well, there's been a couple of questions about that of recent weeks. It's currently at the state and they are going to be reviewing it. And I was told last week that it should take about four weeks. So that gives them about three more weeks to respond to let us know how everything's going. I don't anticipate any kind of disruption in moving forward with the ordinance. We just really would like to get their sign off on it before we say it's good to go and let's move forward with getting, you know, permits out there for the low density rural housing. And that's all I have.
When was that going to be, Ed?
So they told me, they told me four weeks last week. So it should be about three weeks left for that.
Next month?
Yes. And if we, if we get any kind of, you know, because there's always two ways to do it. One is that everything goes through just, you know, legatee split and everything is good to go. And the other is if they have any issues and if they have any issues, I can obviously let everyone know that there was an issue that we got to readdress or something like that. But we don't anticipate any of that. But that's where we're at. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any department heads on Zoom?
You missed one more.
Oh, I thought that you would give your update when we had the staff committee report. We have an additional. My apologies, Director Plabani. Good to see you.
Good morning Chair, Supervisors Drew Plabani, Trinity County Planning Department Cannabis Division Director. I do have a number of updates for you. I guess I'll start off with my normal licensing stats, which we haven't seen a significant amount of change to over the last, you know, month and a half or so, but I'll go into kind of the change in that trend that I foresee in a little bit. But currently, we have received 404 appendixy documents. Of that, we have now successfully approved and noticed 122 of them in the paper. And of those in, you know, noticed in the paper, we have 78 that have been picked up and are active. Related to kind of the progress we're making in terms of our engagement with the consultants and the implications that that has on the licensing trends. We re-engaged the second consulting group, Laco. And now both groups are working under a 10 project bid batch concept. And so we received the quote from, a quote from both of them separately and not going into specific numbers, but essentially the technical review should now cost just under $900 per project, which is a significant improvement from, you know, a couple of months ago when I said, you know, depending on how you slice the numbers, it could be the better part of $10,000 that was being spent for each project to be reviewed. I think even with a more conservative set of numbers, it's still probably a sixfold reduction in, in the cost that was previously being incurred to review those documents. So I'm, I'm pretty, you know, excited about that and I do expect to see, starting this coming week in the newspaper and, you know, an uptick in the projects that we will have approval for and be noticing. I guess the bad news that I have to report, which Lisa sort of mentioned, is that our type two funding request with GoBiz for the equity program was denied. I had a follow-up conversation with the, with our grants coordinator and the head of that grants program. And simply, the criteria that was found through the equity program assessment and the establishment of the program manual, the state felt that the criteria were too inclusive or too broad. And so for that was the main reason that they did not approve the equity funding request. So over the next few months at some point, I would like to bring the approved program manual back for your review and ideally approval so that I can resubmit at the end of this year for the next round of equity grant funding. Last week, I submitted the final budget amendment adjustments requested by the D C C for our local jurisdiction assistance grant and also submitted the biannual report that was due on February the 15th. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the Noroma Quintu tribal elders and we're working on establishing an M O U with them for their involvement in environmental review, tribal consultations going forward for cannabis projects. And lastly, we have begun working with the Mentor Harnish and Ringcon team on ordinance revisions to the cannabis ordinance. And my hope is that in the next few weeks, they will have come up with the first round of the administrative draft for public review and, and for your review as well. I think that wraps up my report out for now. I don't know if you have any questions specific to any of those items, but.
What was, what was the last thing Drew?
The last thing was the ordinance revisions with Mentor Harnish and Ringcon.
Ringcon? Help me with that.
Ringcon is, I believe, the environmental consulting firm that subcontracted along with Mentor Harnish.
Other questions?
Yeah. So Drew, if you bring this back to us, not so broad of a scope and we approve it. When is the next round of funding and how much could we expect to possibly get?
So the next round of, I believe, the application window opens in October of this year. And the awards period is pretty much the same as, as it was for last year. So we probably wouldn't hear back until January 2024. The one change to the grant solicitation between fiscal year, last, last year and this year going forward is that grant funds requested and approved over $500,000 require a one-to-one funds match from the local, the jurisdiction receiving those funds. So realistically, we'd be looking at a maximum of $500,000 next year.
I do.
Thank you for reaching out to the Noroma tribe. I would like to ask you to, or I guess I can't ask you. I would enjoy if the Sunangway tribe was also included in, because they, they're the native tribe within my district down, down river. So I think that would also be great to include them if that was something that, that we could do.
Yeah. If, if, do you have the contact information for whoever the appropriate point of contact is?
I do.
I'll email you and then I can follow up and try and include them in.
Thank you.
Further discussions.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Any department heads on Zoom?
I have no department heads on.
Okay. A report from our county administrative officer.
Good morning. Just a couple of items. Suzie and Craig and I have continued to work on fee study updates. We were hoping to have brought that back to you today. However, we will have it at the next board meeting. Some of the changes with the departments that have been quite a bit. So we're still hashing through that. However, you know, we discussed some strategies to stay on track to have the other departments in kind of short order come behind so that we're on track with a June submission with the other departments included. So I feel good about our strategies in place for that. I am continuing to work with county council on the fee waiver policy and procedure.
Okay.
And then I will be working with our H R staff with and our C O staff on bringing back a, or bringing to you a COVID resolution. As you're aware, the state will be ending their state of emergency on the 28th of this month. And then the federal government has identified May 11th as their date for ending the public health emergency. And so we will be evaluating resolutions we need for the board to approve and then what changes in county policy. I've been reading through Cal OSHA, their temporary emergency standards. To some extent are being folded into what they're calling a two-year adoption. And so just reading through on what direction that we will be giving to staff.
Okay.
In that regard. End of report.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, reports from members of the board of supervisors. Let's start with Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
I am very excited about this report. I've been thinking about it for, for a while. So first, I would like to say that we had what I believe to be a very successful meeting in Junction City with the Department of Transportation. Folks came down and met with the community at the Junction City School regarding the Canyon Creek Roads Project. And we had, I believe, roughly 99% turnout of all the folks that live beyond, beyond the slide and, and on that road up there. And it was just really, I think it was, it was, I felt that there was good communication and I felt like the community really, really appreciated the time that our, our staff took to, to make that meeting happen. And I also feel like there was some good knowledge that was absorbed on both sides of, of the table there that evening. So thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to have that, that meeting and the staff doing that. I immediately left from that meeting and traveled to Sacramento and departed for Washington DC the following day and attended the, the Naco Conference in, in Washington DC. It was a very, very informative, a lot of meat on the bones conference. I was really impressed with the lineup of folks that we got to hear speak and sat in the presence of some of the big decision makers in our country, including the president came and spoke at our luncheon. So that was, that was really kind of monumental. You don't get to really see the president speak in person very often. So that was enjoyable. But some of the things that I'm bringing back from that, they're pretty, pretty deep and lengthy. So I'll just hit the tops of, of them. One of the things that came out of COVID that was, that was positive is Congress now recognizes that the counties have quote unquote been unmuted because we're able to, the whole zooming, you know, brought, brought everyone more face to face than they ever really have before through that, that. that communication conduit. So they're hearing a lot more from counties than they ever have before. And when they did a survey, they said roughly, it takes roughly ten percent of a constituent's base for to to bend the ear of Congress and make them make maybe a different decision than what they thought of. So it really doesn't take a lot of pressure. It's just a consistent, a consistent effort. And they, with talking with several Congress folks from the House and then also from the Senate, they said that it's more and more important to hear from COVID did make it make them very aware that the leadership has to be able to flow through the conduits from the government, the federal government, through the states and to the counties because the county government is where they actually make contact with with humanity. So they're recognizing the value on a greater level of of county supervisors, boards or commission boards. That was very interesting and and I was happy to hear that. The Secure Rural Schools Act is an active topic of of high interest. And I think that we should really jump into that momentum and ride some of that current that already has been generated via our superintendent of schools here, but then also many, many of the other rural counties are really pushing on making sure that these fundings come through. So I think it would be in our best interest to align with those voices. The I I went predominantly, the the two topics of interest that I tried to stay in theme of was the wildland fire and public lands issues, and then also the opioid addiction and mental health concerns in rural communities and rural regions. So that's where I spent most of most of my time. In regards to the US Forest Service, we got, we were set in the presence of the chief and he, I would just like to echo that everything that we heard today locally is is seriously coming from the top down. He is very interested in making sure that we staff up our forests and that we're getting work done on the ground and that he spoke directly to the ability to harvest timber more regularly and to be able to get that burnt timber off the ground faster so that it still has some viability. And then also just kind of making sure they're aware that their forest, that their forest wildfires impact county roads. And so that was great. Many, it was just nice to hear that we're not the only ones, like, we're not, we're not crazy. So this, these things are happening all over. They're very aware that their wildfires are impacting county roads and they're looking toward that good neighbor agreement to to be able to help address some of those things. They're also very aware that the wildfires have been impacting private homeowners' ability to maintain and afford homeowners insurance. That was something that is a huge issue, especially in my district. And so I was very happy to hear that that conversation is happening up on the hill as well. There's a lot of stuff going on in terms of of what what was shared today with the Forest Service, land management, land restoration, and really just cleaning up the whole forest and road road situation. So that was good. In regards to the fundings that's coming from the lawsuits and the different things from the opioid addiction story and the mental health problems that that our nation as a whole is is dealing with. There are lots of, there's money that is going to come down in an effort to try to prevent our jails from being filled up with people who are having mental events. So looking towards building or creating places that are somewhat confined and and keeping people safe, but not a jail scenario to help try to work through some of those things because most of the time when someone is jailed from those types of events, whether it's mental illness or drug overdose or what have you, they just continue to be rejailed rather than helped. So that was, that's good that that conversation is being heard. Also, there's concerns and and work being made towards the issue that when people are incarcerated, their healthcare drops if they're on state or federal healthcare, it it stops that moment and then you let them out and they have no way to tend to their their health issues. So that's a conversation that's being happened. I think we probably have experienced that here with folks. And then quite a bit of the money that's going to come down through this mental health initiative is for transitional programs, and I'm really happy to know that they're not just going to make the government be the replacement of the family, but support the families and also funnel some of that money through other nonprofit organizations and faith based organizations to help the recovery process. One, a couple more things. I was, this was a really good conference. I learned a lot and made a lot of connections. I'm happy to be a part of the NACO Rural Action Caucus. I signed up for that and just really learning how to use the the NACO team to help our voices be heard in the in the hallways of Congress and to find out all the different ways that they can help us. And one, this is the last thing. Because we are a member of NACO, there is an opportunity for a Live Healthy Prescription Program. And I don't know if we are part of that, but it's something I think we might want to look into. Because our county is a member of NACO, there's an opportunity for our citizenry to have discounts on their prescription drugs because of being a member of NACO. So I would like to check into that and and share that with with Liz and see if that's something and with Jill to see if that's something that we might be able to offer to our citizenry. There's many other options within NACO as well that can help boost some of, bridge some of the gaps that maybe we have between what the county and our state can provide and what the NACO organization can provide. So thank you for enduring my enthusiasm. It was a really, it was a really good conference and I'm looking forward to building the relationships that I that I made there. And then one more thing, I reached out to Congressman our Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire regarding the frontier issue on our landline phones. And I have gotten responses back from both of them that their staff is furthering the inquiry up the chain of command in hopes to get our landline phones restored in the down river communities. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you mentioned going to jail, you have benefits, we'll say. You're incarcerated for X amount of time, you come out, you have no benefits? Is that, is that the way it works now?
Liz, can you please speak to that?
I will speak in very general terms. This is regarding Medi-Cal, not private insurance. So Medi-Cal, you go in and you're incarcerated. In theory, jail health would take care of your needs while you're there. And then when you exit, you could reapply for medical services. So there are a number of initiatives and changes coming in that space so that we can work with the jail and by we, I mean, social services, working with the jail directly in a partnership to be provided information on pre-release dates and then send staff in there to help them become eligible prior to leaving. So these are really large programs that are rolling out in real time this year. Okay, and it's very complicated.
I imagine.
Yes.
And mental health has a lot to do with that?
Mental health is intertwined in all of our programming. We we really depend on each other.
Thank you.
I just want to say, well done Supervisor Carpenter Harris on, you've only been in the seat for a few weeks. We whisk you away to Washington DC and you go jump on a rural caucus. Nicely done. Thank you for that.
Oh, I really I was really happy I reconnected with some people who I've known from prior public service and happy to see that those relationships still exist and look forward to utilizing those relationships, you know, in resprosity across county lines with other rural commissioners and supervisors.
Very good. Very good.
Great job. Super.
Thanks.
I didn't do anything. So while you were gone, we had some TRP stuff and one of them was the Division of Interested Parties. And it was just talking about reconsultation and opening up doors to the water management of the river in a way, which took place while you were gone. Then we had a proposal review of all the things of restoration, is thinking about funding or having fund, how they grade them and how they rank it and how they get funded, which will continue on. And then we had our TMC monthly meeting a couple of days ago and it was prefunctory, kind of short. And just kind of sets us up for our two day meeting at the end of next month.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, yeah, so we have two day, full day meetings. Sorry. So we have two day, full day meetings coming up at the end of next month that are really the the backbone of of what we're going to do with TMC and they're long meetings. I think fortunately this coming up month, they're here in Weverville. So it should be fairly easy on us this time around and there's a lot of work to be done and I'm I'm really glad to have you aboard and with all your knowledge is great. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Wilder.
Okay, for out of county travel, Supervisor Gogan and I attended a senior officials workshop for all hazards. And what that really involved was a lot of education and then table exercises regarding how leaders of various entities work together in disasters, emergencies, and and they had some great examples and exercises that we could work through. And and so it became a very practical application of what they were trying to teach us as well. I thought it was very well done. On the Fire, Trinity County Fire Chiefs Association, like Supervisor Carpenter Harris, I was trying to reach out on behalf of our county with Frontier Communications. My approach was I connected with the CEO through LinkedIn. He responded within twenty four hours. And within twenty four hours of that, I had contacts from three people in his executive team trying to follow through and address the problems. I tried to get out of the middle of that and get them connected to staff, so passed on that information to the Office of Emergency Services and to the sheriff and to the CIO's office so that they could then use that level of visibility. But that they, I was very impressed with the response. So we hopefully have that. And they were looking for specifics about the ongoing residential side, the part about the sheriff and the jails, that was easy. And they were trying to work to make that happen faster than was currently set up. But on the resident side, they kept asking, and I said, well, I don't have that information, but the information is available. Who who do we get it to? So we can continue to follow up on that. We'll hear about this later. I continue to work with the team on the cannabis financials. We still want to bring that back before the board. On the strategic plan, we continue to work through that process and continue to modify it as well. So when we bring this back to you, we are identifying things that need to change in the plan, making it richer and more actionable. So it'll be clear who owns each component of the plan and how will we measure success? And that process is continuing. Onboarding, I think we have a number of different onboarding opportunities. We we are going to be bringing on a new CIO pretty soon, so I'm reached out to offer to help on that as well so that we can make sure that we have a very strong onboarding schedule and plan for our new CIO. Regarding economic development, our meetings continue in that area. And one of the more recent things is I I reached out to someone who was involved for many years in the Reading area with economic development and venture support and now is working in that same capacity in Anderson. And she has agreed to come up here and meet with some of us to help understand what she has seen work and not work so that we can learn from that and take advantage of things that she can share with us. And coming up, we have Supervisor Carpenter Harris and I will be attending the new Supervisor Institute, the last two days of that workshop series. So we're looking forward to that. And I have a number of things that I'll be trying to bring forward on the agenda in the future. One of those that's been mentioned before is the snow maintenance for the volunteer fire departments. But I'll follow up on those behind the scenes.
I had no out of county travel this, since our last meeting. I did yesterday. Yeah, yesterday I was in town here. I met with Director Caucus about the snow removal issue, so I will touch base with you on some of that. I also met with Director Presley yesterday concerning the limited density rural dwelling stuff after the public comment we'd had previously, wondering if we need to have the ad hoc going again. So I think that Director Presley touched on that. I think that's moving forward. Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
And I didn't report out publicly that I did follow up with the individual who brought that to public comment that I had reached out to Cody Smith in the Building Department and that he had let me know that this was in process. So I did let that person who had come to public comment know, but I didn't let the public generally know. So fault of my own and that base has been covered. I attended a meeting with Supervisor Lou Wilder that he had set up with a company called Civitas. And they are an entity that specializes in helping counties move their economic development forward with some creating fun, creative funding opportunities that local partners can define themselves in different ways, both interest wise and location wise. And so looking at some possibilities there. Really appreciate Supervisor Lou Wilder's continued efforts to find new discussion points and ideas to keep this process rolling forward. So good things are on the horizon there. I hosted two broadband update meetings that included in different components Connie Stewart, who is our region's broadband consortia lead through Cal Poly Humboldt, Planning Staff Barbara Hayes, who is the Chief Economic Development Officer at RCRC. And she is also the staff support for the Golden State Connect Authority. And then the local internet service provider who is assisting me in understanding all of the technicalities that one word, not understanding what that means, can make a big difference in decisions that get made. And so those conversations have been fruitful and I think giving some understanding back to RCRC. I just, here's how it's actually playing out on the ground. Here's how people are perceiving what is going on. And she was appreciative to have that conversation. That was good. I did attend the Trinity County Collaborative Field Trip last Friday and was able to visit two or three sites before I needed to be in another meeting. But really good conversation is taking place in support of what Supervisor Berkey shared in her presentation this morning, bringing the different partners together to realize that the Forest Service knows full well, they can never implement all this by themselves. They need the partners. And what I really like is that even with how vital the Watershed Center and the RCD is going to be to all of this, they also realize that they can't be the sole players and make this happen. So there's such good opportunity for new businesses to spring up and they're they're asking for that and encouraging that and creating plans where proposals will be submitted and and folks will be able to see, you know, to what level of investment would I maybe see myself, you know, participating and growing a business of my own where the the work will be spread and there's opportunity. So the most exciting news I have to report arrived with a phone call from Senator McGuire a week ago today. I didn't have that number programmed into my phone. And so when I saw the seven oh seven prefix, something said, you should probably pick this up. And it was just an absolute delight that he could have staffed that out and he did. And he called me personally to say that he had heard my plea and reached out and made his magic work with the Division of Boating and Waterways to provide the evidence of their commitment for the hundred and sixty five thousand dollar balance that's needed toward the engineering portion of getting our Minersville Boating Ramp, that whole project engineered. And they, the press release that came through his assistant Nora Mount through the office, yeah, pop it up there. It's just exciting. And we're looking at, if you scroll to the bottom, they tell us that construction will, I have it here, construction of the boat ramp is set to begin in twenty twenty five. Boating and Waterways has allocated four point eight five million for the project overall, which will include ramp placement with a wider concrete boat ramp turnarounds and a sidewalk, new restrooms, a dual cable anchor system and designated parking areas. So thank you to Senator McGuire. Appreciate the energy and his involvement. And just on a little side note, look forward to him being our auctioneer again at the multi-community entity sponsored. multi, uh, community entity sponsored gala that will happen on April the fifteenth. Okay, that is the end of my report. Um, moving on to reports on the ad hocks. So with regard to the Good Neighbor Authority, that project, uh, is in, uh, District Ranger Tara Jones' hands as she continues to review that with again, the goal of being sure with as much certainty as, as possible. But once that goes into the grants and agreements, review, it will come out clean because if there are revisions that further have to be made, and then this has to all be rerouted back in. Now we're approaching the kind of expected, uh, typical spring bottleneck that happens in that review process. And, um, she's trying very hard to avoid that. I didn't ask her if I could share the exact dollar amount. Um, she's trying really hard to front load a big chunk of money into that agreement. She doesn't know if she'll get it. I, she's shooting for the moon here and, um, I just really applaud her, um, her efforts on our behalf. And we've had multiple conversations about how the receipts off of those projects will then refund, you know, those, uh, continued projects going forward. This is a, a really exciting thing for us. Um, all right. So, uh, report from the strategic plan. Supervisor Lou Wiler, if you had anything else to say about that, kind of?
Well, right now I'm wait, I'm waiting to have some time with, uh, interim chair so that we can confirm the way forward. But the idea is that we will, um, shift gears to meeting every other week so that we can keep momentum without tying up too much time and be on a pace that would allow the staff to be presenting to the new C O their view of the strategic plan fully fleshed out within his first three weeks on the job. And so that he could then bring that back to us in a meeting soon after that. So that's, that's kind of the pace that we're trying to set.
Good. Thank you. Really appreciate staff's efforts on this. They are, uh, so busy already and yet they see the value and the need for this and appreciate their ability and willingness to fit that into what they're already doing. Okay, um, on the Trinity County water related ad hoc that I set up and was brought to my attention that I need to further define what I mean by that. So I did so for the newspaper and we'll do so here publicly for the record. Um, as a county, we need a better defined policy framework regarding statewide legislative and litigation issues pertaining to water. And specifically Trinity County Water Rights. This ad hoc is to review these issues over the next 10 months and report back regarding any policy recommendations for discussion and possible adoption by the board. And the ad hoc terminates with my chairmanship and that was previously stated. So with that further definition, Supervisors Gogan and Carpenter Harris, are you still in?
Absolutely.
Good. All right, uh, Staff Committee Report on the Cannabis Budget from Cannabis Division Director Pobani.
Chair Supervisors, um, so since the last Board of Supervisors meeting, when I gave a presentation, I've had the opportunity to have several more meetings, um, in order to continue forward with the objectives of this staff committee. I met with Senior Financial Analyst Susie Hawkins and interim C O Hamilton. It's last week or the week before now, it's been kind of a blur. And, um, so we are continuing to work on the requested spreadsheet and, um, ultimately, I think what we'll bring forward is, is, you know, a staff report with findings and recommendations. And so we look forward to having that before you in the not too distant future.
Thank you. Thanks for your effort. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, let's move into the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Is there any public comment on consent items?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, do we have any?
Jill just sent me a chat. She'd like to speak on three point nine, on the Reading Jet Center.
Um, okay, so we will pull that item and allow her to speak on that. So with regard to the remaining items, do any supervisors wish to pull any items? All right.
I, I just have a question about that. Is that somebody that just wanted to have public comment on item three point nine? Because you can just give the three minutes to speak on that without having to pull the item if, and then we can decide if we need to pull it afterward if somebody wants to speak to it.
I got an email from her right before the meeting started and I believe there's an update to
Okay.
The
All right. So then it wouldn't need to be pulled.
Any other items? No? Okay. Would entertain a motion on the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Okay. For the second?
I will second.
All right. So we have motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, item three point nine, pulling that up now. Approve an agreement with Reading Aero Enterprises Incorporated doing business with Reading Jet Center to provide general aircraft repairs and/or replacement, aircraft repair services, annual inspections and other aircraft maintenance on the Trinity County Sheriff's Office aircraft on an as needed basis. Fiscal impact stated to be up to eight thousand dollars per year from the sheriff's budget. Um, I'll let Jill go ahead and speak to the item. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, so this is just a standard agreement. We had an agreement previously with Benton Air Center, but they went out of business. So this is replacing that one. The only change that they had was in the insurance section. There were volunteers listed as being covered. They requested that be scratched and County Council and Trendell agreed that that wasn't anything that was major that had to be included. So we scratched that. I believe that was it. There was some back and forth as far as the limits were concerned, but County Council and Trendell were also fine with the limits that we, um, came to. So there might have changed, nothing that majorly changed the contract, but I just was told that if there's any change after it's been submitted and gone before the public, we had to pull it and just like make you aware.
Perfect. Thank you for doing that. A quick question. So with your volunteers, do they just sign releases? How do you, how do you work with that?
I don't believe we ever have volunteers that go up. Usually it's only full-time employees.
Okay.
Be going up. Um, and this is specifically to just maintenance for the aircraft. So this isn't, yeah, this is just for the covering Reading Jet Center and their maintenance, the annual inspection and any maintenance that happens to the aircraft.
Okay, I follow you.
Having to do flying the aircraft itself.
Okay. Um, any questions of supervisors? All right, uh, any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Frazier, second by Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier? Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, public hearings, Building and Development Services, item four point one. Conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning the county buildings and construction ordinance title fifteen. Number one, find the adoption and implementation of this ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Section one, five, zero, six, one, B, three, common sense exemption, which applies to projects where the activity will not result in a significant effect on the environment. Number two, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code, section one, five point two, six, regarding electric vehicle charging station permit expediting. No fiscal impact. And with this, um, I believe we hear from Associate Planner Skylar Fisher. Is she on the line?
Hello, am I, am I coming in? Okay?
You are. Thank you. Good morning.
Okay. Hi, good morning. Um, thank you, Board Chair, Supervisors and members of the public, uh, for hearing my item. Um, this is my first time zooming into the board chamber, so it's very strange being in the box. But we will persevere. Um, so this item is, um, as Chair Cox said, a draft electric vehicle charging station or E V C S permit streamlining ordinance. This draft ordinance was, um, brought forward to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors due to California Assembly Bills one, two, three, six, and, um, Assembly Bill nine, seven, zero, which directs local governments to create an ordinance to streamline the electric vehicle charging station permit review process, um, through limiting the review of these permits to health and safety concerns. In addition to creating an expedited timeline for review based on the number of, um, electric vehicle charging stations being, um, requested in the permit. In addition to this, um, these assembly bills create, uh, new parking space requirements to accommodate, uh, the creation of E V C S. So there is, um, a draft ordinance and checklist, um, attached to the, uh, packet submitted to Novus, which, um, was reviewed by the state and meets the state requirements. This item is coming back to the board. Um, it went to the, the board and was heard on December sixth, twentieth and twenty ninth of 2022. On the last meeting, the twenty ninth, um, the item was referred to the Planning Commission to review the draft ordinance to see, um, if there, if it was consistent with, um, our zoning districts, if there are any zoning districts that electric vehicle charging stations wouldn't necessarily be consistent with. And so the draft ordinance went to the Planning Commission on January twenty sixth, 2023. And, um, there were some changes to the ordinance from when it went to the board and when it went to the Planning Commission. There were some administrative edits. Um, we got some feedback that some of the language in the preamble was a little confusing, a little too wordy. So we changed that a little bit as well as removing excess spacing, um, that we overlooked when we first presented that ordinance to the board, but there were no substantive changes. At the Planning Commission, the discussion primarily focused around, um, the general descriptions of the various zoning districts. Um, what the, what the intent of these zoning districts are as well as, um, the different general plan designations of the county, which I believe a matrix is also attached, um, to the staff packet describing, um, what the different designations are, how they correspond to different, um, zoning districts, that sort of thing. As well as there was a discussion regarding, um, Trinity County's, uh, capacity, um, in regards to if we have enough, um, power to support a hypothetical increase of electric vehicle charging stations, um, if this ordinance were to be passed. So, um, after all that discussion, the Planning Commission, um, made a motion, a unanimous motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to find, um, all zoning districts compatible with electric vehicle charging stations. They also asked the board to consider ways to encourage electric vehicle charging stations. Um, one such way that was discussed at the meeting was potentially, um, not increasing taxes on parcels that have, um, electric vehicle charging station improvements. Cause that was a concern cited that we're not really incentivizing, um, people to develop these, um, stations if they're going to get increased taxes by doing so. And finally, um, the Planning Commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt the current checklist and draft ordinance, um, as is. And so all of that being considered, um, the planning department staff, um, agree and affirm the recommendation of the Planning Commission to the board, um, and recommend that the Board of Supervisors, um, find this project to be exempt under CEQA per the common sense exemption and to, um, adopt the draft amendment to the building and construction ordinance to, um, create this electric vehicle charging station streamlined permit streamlining ordinance, excuse me. And I can answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate that. Any questions of board members?
Also for later.
We will open the item for public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no chats.
Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Frazier?
Okay, I, I do have some issue with the, the Planning Commission findings. I mean, and nothing personal, but I I can't agree that all zoning districts are appropriate for electric vehicle charging stations. We have zoning districts that don't even allow housing by right. So, um, I'm zoning districts include open space, timberland. Uh, there are places this does not fit and I have an issue with that. I still struggle a lot even with allowing commercial electric vehicle charging stations. And even in rural residential areas, I mean, we've just recently had long discussions at Board of Supervisors meetings concerning whether or not we should allow minor subdivisions in some of these areas where people are concerned that it's going to affect the quality of their life because it changes the dynamic of their neighborhood. And to say that this will not have an effect if we I, I realize there's safeguards, but they're not very, uh, safe when you have no, there's no notification going out to the public. None of this stuff, I, I struggle with it and, uh, I don't know how we can fix the issues I have with the ordinance that we've been presented. I really don't. So, um, I was hoping the Planning Commission would do a deeper dive really and come up with, okay, this is why it fits in the zoning district. This is why it doesn't in this one. And, and really flesh this out and have an ordinance that fit Trinity County. And I, I was disappointed, um, that to say that it fits in all zoning districts. I can't agree.
I just, do we need to have a motion to have this discussion?
Not yet. I think we're, I think we're fine. I think we're not leading into
Or we can make a motion.
Well, okay, I'll put a motion on the table. Um, I'm going to move that we, um, adopt this item as presented today.
I will second.
Okay. Um, and I'll give you some reasons for that. Um, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I respect what you're saying. I think what trumps that in my head at this point is that we were required to start looking into this years ago. That didn't happen. We are outside of a window of compliance right now. And I just feel like the state has preempted this field and we can't change that. Um, we have limited resources and to me, this isn't a fight that I want to risk Trinity County resources to engage to where if we want to take this on, I think that working through legislation is probably the avenue rather than risking what, what we can do sitting here as a board. Um, you know, we've asked council about that numerous times and the answer that comes back is there are no guarantees what the state may do. Um, I feel like the safer avenue is to say, okay. And we'll, I think also looking at what is the likelihood that something like this, that's so disturbing and so egregious, um, is going to happen. If, if somebody here is going to do that, then somebody here is going to deal with the neighbors that are here. And it just doesn't seem like it's highly likely to me. So weighing those two things, I just land on, um, I'm taking the low risk, uh, legislature path.
So I, I just want to follow up on what Supervisor Frazier said and ask staff, I guess. So if, if, um, this is open to any parcel anywhere because there's any zoning is okay with it. Then what, what processes are in place or would be in place to prevent it from going into someplace that clearly it shouldn't be? Are there, are there other components of the ordinance that address? Are there other components of the ordinance that address what Supervisor Fraser identified as concerns or not?
So currently, there's no language in the draft ordinance which would prohibit the stations in any zoning district. I understand the concern about open space and I've also tried to spend a lot of time keyword searching zoning and these assembly bills and all the messaging that the state has been putting out in regards to like encouraging charging stations, but everything that I've seen so far is essentially encouraging it to just be a building permit process and that zoning isn't really considered in the review at all. So I don't think that's really the answer we were hoping for, but that's what I've seen.
So, thank you Skylar. In that example, so if someone came into an open space that usually is only certain things are allowed and not much, and they are submitting that and it's coming through this process, this process would say, okay, or would it probably get stopped because you couldn't put the driveway in to get to the space that you wanted to put it in? Or I'm just trying to figure out if there's anything practically that would prevent something bad from happening? And if it, if there isn't, then what would be the county's recourse?
I mean, the one thing is that it is reviewed for public health and safety. So if there was a major public health or safety concern associated with putting a charging station on a parcel, that would be caught.
Well, my concerns are not addressed. I mean, it's I, I don't know, maybe I'm going back too far in time to Planning Commission days, but this is something that, and it's not just open sip space, it's not just TPC, it's, I mean, we have a lot of zoning districts in Trinity County that this doesn't fit in, even class, unclassified. That can be anything in Trinity County. We have it just to say that this should be allowed in any zoning district, and I would be fine with it if we could separate out commercial and private. Anybody should be able to put a charging station in their yard. I have no problem with that. If it's for their own personal use, but a commercial charging station should be only allowed where commercial activities are allowed. You can't put a gas station in, in your yard. You can't build a store in rural residential. You can't. Then this is something that should be in highway commercial, mostly in highway commercial zoning where it's for highway activities. It's a, and it's a commercial activity. So I struggle with it. I can kind of understand where Supervisor Cox is coming from. But at the same time, it's a lot more difficult to say, yeah, we're going to allow it in every zoning and then we have to, maybe nothing happens. But if somebody comes in and says, I'm putting in 200 charger station and the community's up in arms, then we find ourselves in this situation where we're trying to come up with findings on why to deny something that we said we would allow because we know it doesn't fit, but we said it's allowed. You don't have to look too far to find where that doesn't work. We've been dealing with cannabis ordinances for the entire time I've been on the Planning Commission or the board. And when you do something just because the state said so, or well, it has to be, we have to take that easy way now, it always comes back around to, we have a major problem now that we could have solved. And we're trying to find a way to weasel out of something we should never got ourselves into in first place. So rather than try to go the health and safety route where sometime down the road, we're trying to figure out how it's a major health and safety issue to allow this charging station where it shouldn't be. And coming up with findings that are really bogus and trying to backhandedly disallow something that should have never been authorized. I don't like that. If we say it's okay in every zoning district, when somebody comes in here to the board and is going to put a charging station in downtown Weaverville in a residential district, they're going to get my vote because we said that's what's allowed. And we don't get to try to underhandedly, behind the scenes, tweak the rules and find a way to not allow something. That's not how it works. We either have to do it right or we have to allow it. And that's, I struggle with that.
So what is your recommendation that we should do with this ordinance?
My recommendation I brought up at our last board meeting or one of the previous meetings, I'd say, yes, we allow private EV charging stations in any zoning district. That's fine. And commercial EV zone and expedited in any zoning that would allow for a regular gas station. Because it's the same thing.
And I do have a question. So Skylar, I'm wondering, clearly this is all about streamlining and once, once it's clear where it is appropriate to be done, that it happens quickly, right? That's the main focus of this. Is there anything about what Supervisor Fraser is suggesting that is counter to what the expectation of this ordinance is supposed to be? Is defining where it can and can't be a problem or to the way that the ordinance is supposed to be drafted? I wouldn't think so, but I just want to make sure.
So something that helped me kind of get an idea of where the state wanted us to be, and I believe it's one of the attachments, is the electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining requirements and best practices. And so that was provided in a guidebook that was drafted by the state in ways that a county or like a local government would be compliant with AB 1236, ways that we would be consistent and going above and beyond to be compliant type of thing. And then they also, the state also prepared a table of actions that a local jurisdiction could perform that would not be consistent with AB 1236. And so in that kind of list of non-consistent, non-best practices includes examples such as making it a discretionary permit or for certain charging stations such as fueling station or say stating that a charging station is a fueling station requiring additional zoning review. So those are like examples within the not best practices. You're like, what was it? Not compliant. So those are their not compliant examples. So that's what I've been drawing from when I'm kind of formulating the discussion for you of what I'm seeing from the state. But it's kind of hard to know, like, in the same way of the direction that we've gotten from county council so far, it's really hard to know how far we can push the envelope on it.
May I speak?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I'm, I'm, I'm almost 100% in alignment with Supervisor Fraser with the single exception that gas stations in terms of their environmental risk and what has to be done underground are a little bit more obviously takes more work to have one there. So what, so my thoughts are, I agree that that an individual person should be able to put a charging station in their home or their own car or for their family. Wherever their home is, that's totally fine with me. And I am in agreement that it should be, as far as commercial charging stations, they need to be where commercial activity takes place. One of my concerns is that say there's a new cul-de-sac or we have a cul-de-sac and there's a vacant lot and someone says buys it and, or they own it and they say, well, I'm going to put in five charging stations right here. You're, you have, we will have people lingering in that area that maybe shouldn't be in that, in that area. And the traffic and just the opportunities for people to sit stagnant in a place for an extended period of time while their, their cars charge. So I just think that it would be very wise of us to, to say that commercial charging stations need to be in commercial areas. Maybe not just where a gas station can be, but they need to be in public, in a public space. And then I'm completely fine with people having their own individual ones, you know, in their homes. But it just concerns me that we, I agree. I, one of my personal policies is I don't like to adopt stuff and then try to fix it later because it never works out. We always, and I've, I've never experienced it working out. So those are my thoughts.
So I have a comment. I agree with Dan 90, 90% of it, except for the, the gas station thing, which I do own a gas station. And I would never have one of these things at my gas station. And I own the surrounding parcels and I would never want one there. You don't want people hanging out for a half hour or 40 minutes. It's I don't even know what you have to go through to get it near your gas pumps and all that. So I I don't, I don't know anybody that would want one at their gas station. You know, I think most of the gas stations in town probably have a hard enough time keeping people moving along. So for that reason, I, you know, I agree on everything else. So just the gas station thing and being an owner of a gas station and the parcels around it. Yeah, I don't want people hanging around.
I wasn't saying you need to have it at the gas stations, but it should be in the same type of zoning. It needs to be in basically in highway commercial to me, or, or at least some kind of commercial setting. It's not, a commercial EV charging station is not something that you should put in a residential area. I mean, I don't, the state apparently doesn't care about land use and planning when they came up with this. It was, they just they're mandating that we have EVs and they don't have the infrastructure, so they're trying to make it easier to do it. Okay, I get that. But it doesn't fit. And if if we do pass this ordinance, exactly how it is, probably still, we're not going to have 14 EV charging stations pop up in Trinity County. But just the idea that we do something we know is wrong doesn't set well with me. It's, it's not right. It's just not good planning. I'll leave it at that. And I, I do think, I mean, as far as allowing, okay, if we allow it in commercial zone, parcels, whatever, I'm, it just, it can't be in residential areas. It can't be in open space. It can't be in TPZ. It can't be on AP land. I mean, it can't fit. How can you say that a commercial EV charging station fits on AP land? That's why I sorry, I'm frustrated. I wish the Planning Commission would have had this conversation, but it's just and it's going to, it's really tough for us to go through. I mean, I don't see a lot of us having Trinity County's ordinance with this to go through the zoning and see where it fits. But it's just.
Okay, so if we're, we've already tried the Planning Commission route and that wasn't fruitful. Asking Skylar to go through a whole ordinance and figure it out doesn't seem wise to me or not something I want to do to her workload. So what, how do you feel about being an ad hoc of one or picking your partner? And, and you take on that task of creating it, how you would like to see it?
I would be if we could do it in general terms, I think we could do it today. And it's, I don't, Skylar would have to jump in there and see, because I don't know exactly what commercial zonings. And we have C1, C2, C3, highway, commercial, industrial, all those zonings, I don't know what it would fit in with, but those are the kind of things that we should do.
We'd also want to look at the statute and see how much we could restrict it and whether we could restrict certain areas or not.
Well, and according to the statute, I don't think we can. But at the same time, I don't think the state has the authority to tell us that we can't because we have zoning authority in our county. We, so because they made a statute that says that they can tell us we can't do what we get to do, doesn't make it right. And we've had the discussion with Margaret. It's like, yep, we don't have a leg to stand on. They took that out. It still isn't going to work. So because the state says we don't have the authority, we either have to take that authority our own self or.
Okay, so let's just have this one conversation. Let's look at this from a perspective of pros and cons. If we put this forward and sign it off and get it done, we're out from under the hammer, potential hammer of the state. If we don't and we delay or we change it in ways that the state has said it wasn't supposed to look like that, now we have potential risks. So there's risk on both sides that somebody's going to bring forward something and want to put it, you know, egregiously in an area where it doesn't seem appropriate and it bothers them. And so let's have the, let's have the level of risk conversation.
Probably less likely to have somebody put an EV station in than to be out of compliance with this. I mean, I don't see where the state really, what are they going to do to us if nobody's applying? So the level of risk either way comes from if somebody decides they want an EV charging station. Because if nobody applies, what does it matter if we have a streamlining process?
Okay, so let's ask this question. Let's say that we changed up this ordinance the way we wish to see it. And somebody comes with an application and says, your ordinance doesn't allow me to do the thing I wanted to do because of the way you changed it, but the state ordered you to do it in the way that I want to be able to do it. I'm going to ask council, what you see as the leg, they, that applicant, this would stand on?
Yes, they could bring that sort of claim. Yeah, the state law supersedes the county law. And if they structured it that way, then we would be subject to a suit potentially, yeah.
And, and just so I'm clear, we believe that the way the state statute is written, it prohibits us from identifying zones where it can and can't be done.
I don't know that. As I say here now, I could research it and, and figure that out. But it sounds like, no, it sounds like it's applicable to all areas and then the health and safety is sort of the thing that sort of stops up.
I, I, I hear, get it done right. I hear, have it the way you want it so that when somebody comes forward, what goes forward is what we all wish would happen. I'm just still taking the low-risk route. I'm not into us having to pay out more money for somebody who said, you know, you didn't do what you were told to do. And I guess what's really troublesome is that we were asked to start this conversation and figure these things out back when approaching legislators about the fact that we don't like what the state is ordering, you know, may have had time and been able to create some momentum to make a difference. Why that didn't happen, who knows? We can't fix the past, but here we are.
Just still following up on, I'm just trying to get clarification. Skylar, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, so I, I know I asked this question before and you gave me an answer and I'm still not clear. Sounds like county council would have to look deeper and I know you're not a lawyer, but is your understanding that we are prohibited from defining which types of parcels are appropriate? Because we can still have a very streamlined process. It's just on these 500 parcels that we've identified it's possible to do it on. And then it's streamlined.
Yeah.
So I don't understand, I don't understand. Does the state really say, just do exactly what we say and it could go anywhere, including we'll put it on the edge of the river and we don't really care because it's not environmental, you know, it's not safe and healthy. Does it really prohibit us from doing any zoning whatsoever? I can't believe it does.
So there isn't any language that I've found that like explicitly says really anything about zoning. It doesn't say you can't, like within, like the assembly bills specifically. But so that's what has encouraged me to try to find as much literature published by various state offices as I can regarding electric vehicle charging stations and these assembly bills to see like what the general feel is, I guess. And based on that, it seems like it's very discouraged to review these permits based on zoning. The interesting thing about it is generally electric vehicle charging stations are encouraged to be seen accessory to all uses. And that's kind of like where the parking lot aspect of it comes to, like the parking spaces. If electric vehicle charging stations are seen as accessory to like all parking and parking is generally allowed in like almost every zone district, I think that's kind of like where it, one way that it kind of fits everywhere.
And, and just And, and just because you were there for the planning commission discussion and you said they felt it was fine in all zones, all types of zones. Uh, did they have a discussion like we're having?
No, I was on the line and I didn't see that, not too much.
Yeah, it did not get as deep as we were going, for sure.
It, it wasn't this long of a discussion.
And then, but the, it was just a general statement that was made, we don't see any need to limit by zoning.
So we had a discussion, um, I drew, I drew out um, each zoning district, um, what their, what each zoning district's general description. And intent was, um, if the general description was vague, um, it included what the um, use by right. Uh, what the uses by right are for those different zoning districts. And so that was available for the planning commissions for review. And so based on the review of the staff report and um, the presentation provided and the discussion they had afterwards, that's when they made the determination. Or I guess they made their recommendation to you that um, all zoning districts are consistent.
Okay, well, uh, back to what you said, Chair, I think when I consider the risks. I, I think it, we have, to me, two options. One is we approve it and we ask for work to immediately begin to. Revise it so that it more accurately reflects what we think is appropriate. And then we're at risk of somebody jumps in, in the meantime and says, great, I'll put it there and you can't stop me because that's the way the ordinance reads right now. Um, the other way would be, we say, we're just gonna put this off again and be even further behind the deadline. Um, and put it all in place the first time and we run the risk of somebody saying, you don't have the ordinance in place you're supposed to. So whatever actions could be taken against us for that versus the action of it being put in someplace where we don't think it should be. But those are the only two options to me. We can't just, to me, we can't just say, okay, let's go forward with this because it's hard to fix. We, we have to get it fixed. It's just a matter of, do you do it in two stages or one, to me?
Like, I have a question. Is there any way that we can um, look at this and like supervisor Fraser said. Just say we, we approve the, the ability for, for personal um, charging stations to be in any zoning. That has, you know, homes or whatever on it. And then, and then we say, but commercial uh, must be within a commercial zoning. Within commercial zoning. Can we do that?
Counsel, can we do that?
Yeah, you can tailor it as you wish. Uh, again, I don't know if it comports with the state requirements, but yes, you are free to do that.
And if we were to make changes in the moment, would we be able to pass this today or this has to come back to another reading?
No, you can, you can make those changes now. Yeah, and then it will, it comes back to a second reading regardless.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have to send it back to the planning commission because they had their shot.
Sure. Um, I have another question for you. Can you define exactly what it is? That would be bothersome, that you picture could result from a commercial installation. In a non-commercial zone. Is it, is it light? Is it um, the, the ability of people to linger?
It, the biggest issue I would have, well, it, it depends. We've had these issues come up in the past, but one of the biggest things you hear is traffic. Um, I know that if you did have people just hanging out for a half an hour or so to charge their car in the residential area, that would become an issue. But the other thing is, why this commercial activity? If we're going to allow this commercial activity in any zoning district, and I brought it up before, why don't we allow? A cannabis dispensary in any zoning district? Why don't we allow a store in any zoning district? It's, you, you can't pick and choose the winners. It, if you allow commercial, you allow commercial. And that's just how I work. The only other question I would have for counsel and possibly it's a third option and it's a terrible one. If we pass this and then we had our next meeting have, pass an ordinance that says it is a detriment to health and safety. To have an EV charging station in these zoning districts, will that stand up? Can we determine that a zoning district creates a health and safety issue?
I've never heard of that before.
Could you do it?
Uh, I would think you would wanna have them all together. Theoretically, I guess you could.
Uh, because to me, if you allowed somebody to stand around waiting for their char, car to charge for thirty to forty-five minutes. In a residential district, that creates a safety issue. We don't know who they are. We don't know if they're gonna go rob houses while they're there. Or if we have. These giant electric car charging stations in residential areas. We don't, the health issue could be, well, we don't know who's gonna be tampering with that electricity. So I mean, it, I think it's a terrible idea. But we have to come up with a way to say, we're not going to allow this where it shouldn't be allowed. And if the state's going to handcuff us, then we'll have to find a way to work around it because. Quite frankly, I don't think the state has any authority to tell us we can't limit what's allowed in our zoning. That's our authority. So.
I would, yeah, I'd be, I would be surprised if there wasn't some sort of way of addressing that. I don't. Uh, again, I would have to look at the statute and look at the rules around that to figure that out, but. That does, yeah, makes sense that you can sort of govern your, your zoning regulations as you would as the local government. But it would take some research to do that.
And Skylar, um. Just for, since we're already here and it's after lunch, could you, could you read us some of the use by right from? Do you have that zoning ordinance for, for commercials uses? Um, like for a C one, C two, just use by rights on those. Uh, commercials and industrial zones?
Yeah, um, okay, so starting with retail commercials, that's C one. Um, principally permitted uses include, do you want me to just rattle all of them off?
Sure, you're quick.
Um, we got general office, retail sales and services conducted within a building, daycare center for less than twelve children. Rest home, restaurant without drive-through service, financial institution without drive-through service. Bed and breakfast in and other uses found to be similar by the planning commission. Would you like me to go through all the?
Do C two, do C two and C three also, the use by right.
Um, so for C two, general commercial, it is adult day support centers licensed by the state. General office, retail sales and services conducted within a building, restaurant without drive-through service. Bed and breakfast in, bar, laundromat when hooked up to a community sewer, rest home, auto service station. Uh, auto repair shop, car wash, parking lot, secondhand sale store, undertaking establishment. Theater, mini storage when all storage is within a building, recycling when completely enclosed in a building. Hotel or motel of ten units or less hooked up to a community sewer system and other uses determined by the planning commission. And for highway commercial, the HC district, we have convenience food store with or without petroleum sales. Restaurant without drive-through service, auto service station, hotel or motel. Um, with ten units or less or, or, and hooked up to a community sewer system. Uh, general office, retail stores and services when in addition to other highway commercial uses. Recycling center, when indoors, church and other uses determined by planning commission. And for C three, which is heavy commercial, we have warehouse, mini storage, cabinet shop. Commercial services, metal fabrication, welding shop, wholesale, wholesale sales and storage. And auto repair shop.
What about open space?
Use for right in open space is fairly limited.
Okay, so for the open space or OS district, we have the management of land and forest for the production and harvest of trees. Including tree farming, habitat enhancement or improvement projects as approved by CDFW or other state or federal agency. Pasture or grazing lands or other uses found to be similar by the planning commission.
And EV charging stations hard to graze. I was just trying to. I'm trying to keep track of all those in my brain, but I believe we only have two zoning districts. Hmm, only one, highway commercial is the only one that you mentioned use by right of petroleum stations, isn't it? That's the only zoning district that is allowed use by right for gas stations. If, if I remember hearing you correctly. It's highway commercial.
I'm double checking, but that, I believe that is correct, yes. Here, I can double check industrial. Yes, I think it's just highway commercial.
So I mean, that's kind of what I was getting at with that is. There is nothing that is allowed by right in every single zoning district. Why is this so much different? I, uh, I think that, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem allowing it in all commercial zoning. Uh, I would just because it's frustrating, but at the same time, at least that's getting it out of. There's some zoning districts that are so restrictive that this just. Is crazy. I mean, when I was on the planning commission, we had conversations way lengthier than this. Regarding cannabis and whether even cannabis should be allowed on AP zoning. These people are getting tax incentives because that's in AP zone. And then they're doing commercial stuff that doesn't fit. So, I mean, there are conversations that have to be had. Uh, I agree with Chair Cox. This um, would have been nice if we would have had it in twenty seventeen or whenever this came down. Uh, I could have had this discussion at the planning commission level if everything would have been moving as it should have. But at the same time, we. I can't support just saying, yeah, let's allow EV charging stations expedited in any zoning in Trinity County. I can't do it.
So my, my risk factor kind of changes in my mind too, because if we pass something that says, okay, we'll allow personal use in any zone. This is what you're saying, right? And we're only gonna allow commercial installation in a commercial zone.
Seems to make sense.
Right? And we streamline the process for both. What really can the state come in and pound us for?
Allowing it in the improper zoning. And if they do that, that's where we have county council to back us up in court. And make them prove that they have the ability to tell us we have to allow commercial use in our.
I just don't see us being the target of useful time.
I would hope not.
So, so Dan, would you, although it's not your optimum result, would you be good with uh, commercial one, two and three, highway commercial one, two and three, just to?
Well, I, I would be okay with allowing commercial, uh, the, my, one of my biggest problems is it seems like there's no. There's nothing in this that. Separates private use EV charging stations from commercial EV charging stations. Yes, private should be allowed anywhere that. Well, not anywhere because we have zoning districts that housing is not allowed as a use by right. Um, OS doesn't allow housing. So, um, I would say. Private EV charging stations should be allowed anywhere in conjunction with a house. And commercial EV charging stations could be allowed in commercial zoning and. And, uh, yeah, I would think that would be okay.
Okay.
I was just saying, the only thing I would, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead and you can.
Uh, do you wanna say house or housing?
Well, I would.
Apartment buildings.
Yeah, um, with, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Well, kind of.
I'm just trying to think of one other circumstance. Is there, is there a scenario where I? I privately wanna put in a business on, like I'm looking at heavy commercial. And I have a, um. I just had it here. I've got anything. I've got a, a convenience food store with or without petroleum sales. I've got a restaurant with drive-through service. And I want to have a private station there for myself, for my staff, you know, to be able to have that convenience to charge their car.
Well, I, I, I don't have a problem with allowing. Personal, not private, personal use EV charging stations because that commercial one is going to be privately owned. So it would have to be personal, not private, but I don't even care if you allow that in open space if it's in conjunction with a use that's required. If somebody has a EV charging station in their open space because they went and bought a four hundred thousand dollar electric tractor. Um, to use in their grazing operation, that's, but it's the commercial aspect that's the biggest issue with me. It's.
So how do we word it?
In, in looking at the state uh, statute, it says, review of an application to install an electric vehicle charging station of hydrogen fueling station. Shall be limited to the building officials review of whether it meets all health and safety requirements of local, state and federal law. So it does include local. So I think the idea here is to streamline the process, not to limit the local government's ability to.
But that only.
Structure their.
That's only for health and safety. And it's like, it, it's health and safety code, not zoning code.
I think he's agreeing with.
I'm agreeing with what you're saying in the sense that the idea is that it's a ministerial review and it's streamlined. So if you, the, the ordinance needs to set those parameters out specifically, if they meet those requirements, you issue the license or the permit. Right? That said, you can set the local rules as you wish. So what, but once you set them. Then you can't uh, make it non-streamlined.
Yeah, but I have a problem with streamlining. I just think that we need to, and I, I'll try to make a motion, but it's gonna fall on Skylar. Lap to try to interpret it probably.
One question to counsel before we do that. If they take their best stab at this right now, we consider this our first reading. If in the next two weeks they go, oh man, we missed, you know, two things we wish we would have said it differently. Can we change it then and still finish our second reading at the next meeting?
If it's.
Uh, no, I don't believe so. It needs to be read and sit as it exists for that interim period so that it can be reviewed and, you know. The public can look at it and see what's.
Another question. If we say, okay, Deanna, I want you and whomever work with council, figure out how, work with Skylar. For, ah, this oughta look. Because we're past a deadline, could this constitute the need for a special meeting to get it done more quickly without having two weeks?
Generally, you don't do ordinances with special meetings. Um, and I would support the taking this back and figuring out exactly as, exactly as we want it. Before formalizing it and putting it in place. And I would also add that there are other uh, local governments that don't have this in place that are rural. And we're not the only one.
Okay, good to know. Okay, so with that, I'm gonna have this suggestion. I would like to remove my motion from the table. And I'm ask for a board consensus that we direct that Dan and uh. Skylar work with council to create this as you would like to see it and bring it back on March seventh.
I'm tempted to try to make a stab at it, but.
Go ahead and do it today, you mean?
Yeah, but.
I'm not comfortable with taking a stab and I want it right.
Well, I, I do too, but if we, my thinking on it is if we get it right, we save two weeks. If we get it wrong. It takes the same amount of time as if we go.
I'm actually.
Because we would have to have a second, second reading. So I'm.
Carry on.
I think, I'm trying to read through the ordinance to see if there's a way that I can.
Oh, okay.
That, that I can.
So you're in the ordinance.
Actually give language. That would make it. I don't know, um, Skylar, you might be able to help me out with this. Where could we stick in your ordinance? Language that would restrict the zoning. I'm not, there's nothing in here that restricts zoning, so it's hard to amend it.
I'm, I'm also looking around. Um, one place we could potentially put it is in um, fifteen forty. Which is permit application processing. I see that there's already language. Um, speaking about the health and safety review about um, the checklist. Maybe we could add another. Um. Like a D and a E to speak to the commercial and um, personal charging stations.
And I personally keep things simple. Um, I would say if we added D under fifteen XX point four. That said, um, commercial EV charging stations will be expedited in. Zoning that allows for commercial activity. So that could be, and if you want to list them out, that would be. C one, C two, C three, HC and industrial. If that sounds correct to you, then I wouldn't put anything in there about personal because it's covered in the fact that. It's already in the rest of it and there's no restrictions. So. If that makes sense to you, Skylar.
So just to make sure that I have it, so commercial electric vehicle charging station permits will be. Expedited in commercial zoning districts such as C one, C two, C three, HC. And I. But prohibited in all other districts?
Well, I wouldn't say prohibited. I'd just say that.
Okay.
That that they are not going to be streamlined. They're going to have to go through the. CUP process and all those other zoning districts, just like they would if they weren't streamlined.
Make it one.
You remember what you just said?
Okay, yeah, uh, so if if Skylar understands that, I would make a motion that we uh, approve our EV. Charging station. Draft ordinance as amended and. Move forward from there. Oh, and that we adopt the SEQA finding that this is categorically exempt because of. I think, is that all we needed? I'm lost in the ordinance, so.
I'll second that.
Okay, nice work. So we have a motion by Supervisor Fraser. Do we want to read that back? We could have Skylar read that back.
I'll do my best and Skylar can.
Okay.
Approve as amended with commercial EV station permits will be expedited in zoning C one, C two, C three, HC. And I, all others will be streamlined, will be under the regular.
CUP process.
CUP process and adopt the SEQA finding.
You're good with that? All right, and that's the.
Can I just say, Ashley, the only other clarification is maybe to make sure that that, which section that's under that fifteen XX dot four O and this would be.
D.
D. Just so you have that in your notes. I'm sure Skylar can work with you on it, but just so we have it clear here.
Skylar, can you email me how you're going to write that in the ordinance for the minute?
Yes. Do did we want to say subject to CUP or discretionary review?
I'm okay with however you think is in your professional opinion to address it. Uh, but as long as we were addressing our main concern that there's going to be some review in. Residential areas and the like.
Okay.
Which way do you think, Skylar?
Um, well, typically when we say CUP, it's going to planning commission, but if we said discretionary review, then it might be open to either being through. Director approval or through planning commission approval.
Well, for all the zonings that aren't mentioned, I would say go ahead and put the CUP language in there.
Okay.
I have it.
You guys want me to read the motion again?
Sure.
Approve as amended to, is it the D first? D fifteen XX point four.
No, it's fifteen.
Fifteen.
XX.
XX.
Point four zero.
D. Commercial EV station permits will be expedited in zoning C one, C two, C three, HC and I. All others will go through the CUP process and adopting the SEQA finding. Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Um, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I was just trying to think in my mind if there's a difference between expediting something. And streamlining it because does expedition mean that this comes above anything else that may be. In order in the planning department at that time?
Think we should use streamlining because that's the whole language in the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would give this.
You streamlining, yeah.
Cause it's.
It's a good idea.
Agreed.
Right. Skylar, does that make sense on your end too?
Oh, yeah, I've I've honestly, I've been using the two interchangeably, but I I think it would be good to use one consistent, consistent term.
Okay, so if you could grab a streamlining for this. Great. Now you may pull the board. You don't have to read it again. We're good. I mean.
Supervisor Luke Wyler.
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Cox.
Aye. At this point, here's what we're going to do. We are going to give our staff a one hour lunch break. We are going to utilize this time to um, get some closed session out of the way as best as we can. Because we have two supervisors that need to make their way through a potential storm to get down to supervisor training. And we also have a four o'clock LAFCO meeting that's supposed to take place in this room. So. With that, um, when we return to open session at twelve thirty, we will be. I'm sorry, one thirty. Thank you. We'll be starting county matters with item five point one. In the meantime. Item six point one, government code section five four nine five four point five C, conference with legal counsel existing litigation. Number of cases two, Carlson et al versus Trinity, County of Trinity et al. Trinity County Superior Court case number two zero CB one three six and Subai versus Trinity County. Two one CB one four four. Is there any public comment on our closed session items? I have no raised hands and no new shots. Right. With that, we will close public comment. And we are adjourning open session until one thirty going into closed session.
I'm gonna unmute this and so I'm speaking into the original meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.